Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council Town Hall Meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bates.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Manham.
Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Vlad.
Here. Thank you. We'll jump right into it. Firework safety. We figured tonight would be a good time, this time of year. Fireworks is on everybody's mind that we would go ahead and have some discussion about it. So our agenda item number two is fireworks safety. City officials and city staff members will update the public on fireworks safety and fireworks enforcement. Thank you for being here, everybody that is here. We really, really do appreciate your attendance tonight. I don't know who won the argument, if it was the fire chief or the police chief that goes first, but...
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity.
We now know who won.
I'm Ryan O'Hern, the fire chief for the city of Pocatello, and I'm joined here with Assistant Chief Dean Bullock. He's our Assistant Chief of Public Safety and Community Risk Reduction Specialist, Kim Staus. They're gonna deliver part of our message tonight. But we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk a little bit about fireworks and how we can safely enjoy them around the Fourth of July. The top priority for the Pocatello Fire Department is the preservation of life and property. And so, to that end, we're here to convey a message about responsible use of fireworks, to share some information about areas in our community that they are allowed and areas that they are not. And we can't really talk about fireworks in our community, excuse me, without talking about fire risk and the way that those two interact. And, excuse me. On the topic of fire risk, I just want to take a moment before we get started to express my gratitude to all of the responders for their response to last week's fire on West Clark. They really did a tremendous job, and it was a collaborative effort by members of the Pocatello Fire Department, the Pocatello Police Department, the Bureau of Land Management, the Chubak Fire Department, and many other agencies. We have great partnerships here throughout eastern Idaho with other fire departments, law enforcement departments, federal partners, and it really allows us to be very effective in working together and cooperating on these large-scale incidents. We do it yearly. Unfortunately, we have many opportunities to operate on these large fires together. Seems like we have a few every year. And so I just wanted to take a minute to express my gratitude. I think they all did an exceptional job. We had many on-duty crews, and we also had a tremendous response from many of our employees who were off-duty that came back to help us combat that fire. And we also express or appreciate the outpouring of support that we receive from the community. Certainly, many people were affected along that west bench, and that's kind of what we're here to talk about, is this interaction between development as our community moves into the foothills. You know, Pocatello is a beautiful area. We live in this great area that has access and proximity to wildland areas for recreation and beauty. But with that comes some danger. And occasionally, we can see just a quick spark can turn into a 200-acre fire in just a matter of hours. And that's what happened on Thursday. Today, you'll hear me talk about WUI a little bit, and some of my counterparts as well. And what that is, is the Wildland Urban Interface, and that's where human development and homes are meeting undeveloped land, grasses, brush, and trees. It's a beautiful place to live, but we have to make sure that we're expanding into those areas responsibly to minimize the risk. And in order to do that, we have codes that we adhere to. We enact burn restrictions in certain areas, and that's a lot of what we're gonna talk about tonight, particularly with the use of fireworks. And we're also gonna talk about some historical fires. Most recently, you know, Paradise Fire in California. And while these fires are not related to fireworks, they are related to wildland fires that burned into neighborhoods and then turned into urban conflagrations, where fire, instead of spreading from tree to tree or through grass, then starts to spread from structure to structure. And once you get a critical mass of fuels burning like that, a few structures in a neighborhood, it's almost impossible to control, especially if you have conducive fire weather, like high winds, low relative humidity. And we all know that we have both of those here in Pocatello, and we're increasingly having those, which is leading to what used to be a fire season of maybe July, August, and September, now is a much longer fire season. Some of these fires are occurring. The fire in California happened just in January, and the Marshall Fire, which happened in 2021 and burdened over 1,000 structures in Colorado, that happened in December. So these fires are happening year-round.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question on that? What would you say our fire season here has expanded to? I mean, I know we can have an outlier here or there, but if those were the main months, what are we?
We're deep into it now. You know, the Charlotte Fire in 2012 happened this very same time of year. I believe it was on June 28th. And so where that used to be kind of maybe the start of what we would call fire season, really, now it's more the heart of fire season. And so I think it's starting for us. Some of our counterparts up the valley, up in Madison County, they were having wildland fires as early as April and May of this year. So it's coming much earlier. I would say for us here in Pocatello and the surrounding areas, we're probably looking at that April-to-May start time and running through the fall, probably October.
Thanks.
To that point, we are implementing a burn ban. That announcement is going out this week. It will be in effect beginning on July 1st, and that is for areas throughout. We coordinate with Banan County and other federal partners to implement that, and that is a burn restriction in certain areas. For us in the city of Pocatello, that encompasses what we'll call the Wildland Urban Interface, mostly on our benches, and that just prohibits any open burning during the period of July 1st until October 1st, or until conditions improve to where we feel we can lift the burn ban. Back just really quickly to the Marshall Fire, though, this is one that always I look at, and it really makes me think deeply about this Wildland Urban Interface issue, because a lot of times when we think of Wildland Urban Interface, we think of homes that are interspersed in thick timber. But when you look at the Marshall Fire, and specifically the community was called Superior, it looks a lot like our east bench. It looks a lot like our North Gate, our Highland area, our Satterfield area, East Center, that is a mix of commercial and residential, not extremely high density. We have wide paved roads with greenery in the yards. And that is the type of community that this wildfire burned through in the course of a day, destroying over 1,000 homes, claiming two lives, and causing over $2 billion in damage. So that's kind of what we're talking about when we talk about WUI. It's not just in heavily timbered areas. It's expanding into areas that look a lot like our east and our west bench. And when we show you some of the maps, you'll see that we really are surrounded by WUI. Again, it makes our community very beautiful, but it also brings with it some dangers related to fire risk. Here's a map that we showed you last year. This just is a, it's, we got this from wildfirerisk.org. This just tries, it's a map. You can look at any community throughout the United States to get an idea of the likelihood of wildfire in communities. And as you can see, the areas that are further shaded in that burnt orange are higher risk. Down to yellows and whites equates to lower risk. So you can see where the risks are in our community surrounding us in the foothills. And this is the same map that has the legend indicating the risk, and it just is demonstrating the risk to homes when we looked. And there aren't necessarily homes in all of these areas, but it shows you if you were to look at planning a community or moving into an area, what type of risk you might be encountering. And now I think Assistant Chief Bullock's gonna stand up and make some remarks about fireworks. And Chief, if you have anything to jump in here at any point, let me know.
So before we do that, Kim and Dean, I would like you to come up here. I'll step down. There's two seats available. Kim, you sit in the middle. We need you in the middle. Sorry about that, Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize for the logistical change there.
My name is Dean Bullock. I'm the Assistant Chief for the Pocatello Fire Department, and I am the Fire Marshal for the city of Pocatello. As you can see on the screen, this is some or all of the fireworks that we confiscated last year on the Fourth. Approximately between $8,000 to $10,000 worth of illegal fireworks. Unfortunately, people aren't real happy when we take those from them, because they've spent their hard-earned money to buy these. As you can see, our crews responded. There were 16 fires between June 24th and July 5th, and as I heard in the audience here, you can already hear your neighbors lighting those fireworks off. So even though Pocatello will begin selling them on Saturday, they obviously can find them in other areas around us, and they love to light them off, and they'd probably do it all year if we let them. On the Fourth and the morning of the Fifth, we had seven fires that crews responded to. All of, all seven of these fires were related to fireworks that had been discharged. This was according to investigations and also witness statements, people in the area at the time, neighbors. One of the fires that we had last year on the Fourth required the evacuation of a neighborhood, and it was right in the center of town. So even though they weren't in the WUI areas, the Wildland Urban Interface areas, these fires can happen anywhere in town, anywhere that there's brush, trees, or anything dry. And unfortunately, when we have a fire like this, it takes all our resources on a normal day to fight a structure fire. And even though we bring on extra people to patrol and to take care of these incidents, it still leaves us thin in other areas of our community. If we had other brush fires happen, structure fires, or even medical calls, which we usually have on average between 26 and 30 medical calls a day, it stretches the Pocatello Fire Department pretty thin, especially when it goes to the point of needing to evacuate a neighborhood, which then the police department helps us with that and starts to stretch them thin as well.
Dean?
Yes?
Can I just interject there? Chief Roger Shihawta, Pocatello Police Department. Were you referring to the one, if you go back to the previous slide there, Ryan, the neighborhood that got evacuated, was that the, were you referring to the El Rancho neighborhood? So everyone knows on that fire, it was rapidly moving up that hill, and we had officers that were actively evacuating that, and it was within feet of catching a house on fire there. And the neighborhood's so dense there that if one house catches on fire, then the likelihood of it to spread to another one, and then another one, and then you have some apartment complexes in Wall Street that are right there, we were in risk of losing that entire neighborhood. And if it wasn't for the brush trucks that were out on patrol that we had planned earlier to have out, that very well likely could have caught that neighborhood on fire. So it was a very quick thing that happened and a very quick response. But it's, it's things like that where if you're lighting these mortars off in a densely occupied neighborhood, that if one of those fireworks or one of those mortars releases low, or gets knocked over, or something happens, the wind catches it, it has a likelihood of an entire neighborhood catching on fire. So that was that, that one was spooky, right there, where that whole neighborhood had the chance of going up. So I just kind of wanted to expound a little bit more on that. So, thank you.
Could you explain what types of fireworks are allowed and are not allowed?
Yes, that's on a couple of our...
Okay.
Yep. So here in, here is the city of Pocatello firework map. I'm gonna speak to what's allowed first, and then we'll go through this map here. So here in the city of Pocatello, and it's this way through the state of Idaho, the fireworks that are allowed are called Safe and Sane fireworks. These fireworks, yep. So right there on the packaging, you'll see that stamp there, and they say Safe and Sane.
In case you need that?
Okay. These Safe and Sane fireworks are fireworks that stay on the ground. They don't spread more than 15 feet, so say a fountain, and 20 feet high is all they're allowed to go. So if they leave the ground or explode, they are not considered Safe and Sane and are illegal in the city of Pocatello. Every year, and this will happen this Friday, Saturday, the firework stands are all inspected by the Pocatello Fire Department. Our inspector, April Wheeler, will be doing that. And she will go through every stand, and she will look at every firework they have in there, to ensure that they have the Safe and Sane stamp on the fireworks. If they do not, we, they're required to remove them. If there's any question, it is required of them to give us a firework. And in years past, we haven't had to do it for a few years. We will go let them off in a controlled environment to see what they do. If they leave the ground, we'll go back and tell them they've got to pull all of those off the shelf. And then we inspect the stand to make sure there's somebody old enough to sell fireworks, make sure they have fire extinguishers, they have the correct signage, as to how close people can park to the stand, no smoking, no fuel of any kind, because the last thing we need is a firework stand going up as well. So... And then, as the week goes on till the Fourth, we will do periodic inspection as well. There's been times that they think we're gone, they won't see us again till next year, and then there have been some. Most are law-abiding, and they will do what's right. We've only had one in five years that we found out after we left brought some illegals out to sell. So we will do periodic inspections to make sure that they're only selling the ones we saw the day previous or two days previous. So it usually doesn't happen. And they're really good at, they want to be safe, too, and they know the regulations here in the city of Pocatello. Some of those fireworks that are allowed are fountains, sparklers, the glow worms. Again, anything that says explosion on the, on the firework itself, they will talk about leaving the ground. Those are illegal fireworks. And as we patrol around on the Fourth, they will be taken if we see them. So, okay, so here's some of the illegal fireworks. We're all pretty aware of them. Roman candles, the bottle rockets, the mortars that will shake your house if it's too close, cherry bombs, the M80s. Those are all illegal fireworks in the city of Pocatello. As we all know from surrounding areas, they are illegal fireworks are sold, but they are illegal in the state of Idaho. So they can sell them, but you can't light them off in the state of Idaho. Obviously, that doesn't work out real great at times. So even though they're being sold at a firework stand does not necessarily mean you can light them off in the city of Pocatello. So the Safe and Sane is what's important to look for if you want to light them off. The rest are illegal. So if we can go to the firework map here. So we have expanded some of the areas this year. These maps will be at all the firework stands, and on top of that, we've created QR codes. They'll be at firework stands. You can go to the city website. You can scan this QR code, and you can find out which areas it's legal to have Safe and Sane fireworks. So the areas in the red are prohibited to all fireworks. These are our benches, as Chief O'Hern talked about, our Wildland Urban Interface areas. Everything you see in red. So some of the areas, we've increased the zones. Up on the north end of the Satterfield area, Michelle Street, Michelle has one of the worst goalies that we have in our town. So anything close to that could cause a fire in that goalie and cause us some problems. Down along Stockman and Swisher, we've increased the prohibited zone there. On the west bench, there's Valley View and Highland. We've increased the area a little bit. And then, I just lost my, Rocky Point and...
Canyon?
Canyon, sorry. And Canyon. So we have increased some of the areas just to try and protect our wildland area from possible fireworks and fires. Let's see.
And Dean, I was just gonna comment. So I'm Kim Staus, Community Risk Reduction Specialist. Dean showed you the ones that were considered deemed Safe and Sane, but it's to note that those are still only allowed in, on that map in the white area. So even though they may be Safe and Sane and sold in Pocatello, you still cannot use those in any of the red lying areas, if that makes sense. And then if you live outside that area, just make sure you check with your respective fire department or sheriff's office, if there's not a fire department, to make sure that they also have areas that are designated non, prohibited from using fireworks. So just double-check with that.
Thanks. Just lastly, we will have extra brush units out patrolling on the Fourth. So we have multiple units out there. If there is a fire or something happened, we can get there quick. We, I think, four extra brush trucks. Most of the staff will be working as well, so just to try and stop an incident before it starts.
Okay, so now it's on to me. So basically, we're just asking for the public's help in this. If you can, just to make sure that you adhere to these regulations. It's not that we're not party poopers. We like to have a good time, just like everybody else, but we want everybody to be safe and responsible. So making sure that you're checking that map to make sure it's a safe place to do it, and that you're using those Safe and Sane fireworks. Also, talking to your neighbors, because we can't reach everybody through, even though we are doing media releases and posts, we really are trying to get the word spread to everybody, so that they, too, know that what's legal, what's not legal. And then through education and outreach, hopefully, we can get this spread citywide. Because as everybody knows, when it's, last year on the Fourth, it was one big fireworks show. And so our goal is always to try to do as much as we can, but there's only so much. So that's where we really, really need people to help us. What we ask is if you do see people using illegal fireworks, if you can call in to dispatch, the 208-234-6100, give them as much information as you can. We don't want you to approach the person. We don't want you to put yourself or anybody in your family in danger, so it's just better not to have a conflict. It's just to contact dispatch, give them the information, and they can take it from there. If you have an opportunity, and Roger can chime in on this, to take a picture or a video at a safe distance, and then when the officers get on scene, you can share that with them. That can always help with the investigation as determining who is lighting them. Understanding, too, though, that they're gonna be running to tons of calls, so it may be a less flight delay. But any information you can provide them will help. Also, if you do happen to see any sort of fires, obviously, we want you to call 911 immediately, because the quicker we can get on top of those, the better chance we have of keeping it from spreading to a large, larger area to structures. Did you want to add something, Roger?
Yeah. So on the videos, if you have, if you have a camera system around your house, like a Ring or Waze or whatever you may have, that might be helpful, too. If they could pick up people that are lighting off fireworks, or, I mean, everybody nowadays has a video camera and still camera all in one, and that would be helpful to take that. We could use that as evidence to get information so that a citation can be issued. The other thing, too, is it will be really helpful, is if people, a lot of times when people call up, they say they don't want to get involved. But yet, you are involved because you called. So please leave your name and your phone number so that we can contact people. A lot of times, if we're looking for someone lighting them off, sometimes it's like looking for, where's Waldo? And you think you're in the right spot, but you're not, and it's a couple blocks over. But if we had somebody who was saying, hey, I'm the neighbor, I live at this address, I live at 911 North 7th, and they're lighting them right across the street from me, and if you can give us a direction, that would be, that would be helpful, too. And then, and don't be afraid to ask for contact, too, because if, a lot of times, these things are going on, and they're not happening in our presence, and we'll check the area, and they stop when they see a police car, right, coming through. But if, if you give us a little more information, and sometimes be willing to sign a citation, especially if it becomes a disturbing the peace issue, which is another angle we could attack on this, if we can't see people doing that, but you maybe have video evidence of something for disturbing the peace, that might, that might be helpful. It's just, the more information we have, the better. And the last thing we want to see is a neighborhood go up in flames because somebody is not following the guidelines that we're laying out tonight. So it's, and dispatch is gonna ask you some questions. Know that, the other thing that I think is important to bring up is that I'm not a fan of when the Fourth lies on a, like a Friday or Saturday night, because we have, we're always busier on the weekends, and people are off, and when, have a naturally busy night, we have to prioritize our calls. So if we have, you know, whether there's a bar fight, domestic, an accident, or something like that, we're gonna respond to those things before we would respond to a fireworks call. So we're gonna have extra people working throughout the week and the weekend, but don't, please don't get frustrated if it's a while before we can respond. It's just gonna be, we have to prioritize those things. But if we have that video evidence, we can use that video evidence to issue a citation.
And I don't know, Dean, did you touch on the dates for when the use of cell, or cell and use of fireworks? So fireworks can go on sale starting on June 28th at noon, and they're legal in the city of Pocatello to be used from June 28th through July 6th. So those are the dates to be able to use the Safe and Sane in the allowed areas. So a lot of times, people think it has to stop right on July 4th at midnight, but the way the code written, it can go through the 6th.
Kim?
Yeah.
So I'm curious, what is the potential civil and criminal liability for somebody that might illegally use fireworks and start a major fire? I'm guessing this could be pretty significant.
Yeah, so we had the, we called it the Gold Yeah. So, we had the, we called it the Gold Field or the Bitterroot Fire. Was that in 15?
2017.
17. 2017. It was here in the city of Pocatello, and it was lit, filled on fire, adjacent to the home, using an illegal firework, and it burned down two and a half houses. And they can be sought criminally and civilly to pay for the damages on that. And it can, I mean, house prices aren't cheap. So, you ought to, I mean, keep that in mind, that a few minutes of fun can result in a lifetime of devastation.
Got it. Thank you.
A little bit of follow-up for that, Councilman Nichols. So, if you're lighting fireworks off in a, like aerial fireworks in a non-wooey area, it's a $100 citation.
So, the white area, right?
The white area, yeah. If you're lighting them off in, if you're lighting off safe and sane, you're fine. If you're, if you're lighting off anything in the non-wooey area, then it's a misdemeanor, and that requires a court appearance. So, and then, the judge can set the fine on that. So, that's kind of up to the judge on a misdemeanor. So, the infraction is $100, as per state code under Idaho Code 392609, if anybody's out there interested in the code number for that.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? And this is just, we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about fire safety as well when it comes to fireworks, even with safe and sane fireworks. Making sure that if you are using fireworks, you always do it on a hard, flat surface, away from any structures, not up close to your house or under a vehicle. Obviously, that lends itself to a potential for a fire. Making sure you have a water source readily available, a garden hose, a bucket of water, something that you can quickly put on the fire, firework if it, for some reason, malfunctions and starts on fire. Never allowing children to light fireworks. This is a big one. I know kids like to help out and maybe use the punks, but fireworks burn very hot, specifically sparklers. They'll burn at over 1,000 degrees. And when you look at glass can melt at 800 degrees. So, just something to keep in mind, especially if kids are running around with sparklers. Never try to relight a malfunctioning firework. It has a potential, it could blow up, and you don't want to risk hurting yourself or somebody else. Also, once you're done lighting the fireworks, allow plenty of time for them to cool. And then, what we always suggest is if you have a bucket of water that you can put them in, leave them submerged in there overnight, and then, the next day, put them in your trash can. Because we do get a lot of garbage can fires when people think that they're cool enough, and they stick them in the trash can, and it catches on fire. Never store fireworks in your home. The chief was telling me about one from Hawaii. I don't know if you want to touch on that.
There was a pretty serious incident on New Year's Eve, actually, this year in Hawaii, where some people were storing a large amount of illegal fireworks and lighting them off on New Year's Eve. And there were, one of the fireworks actually discharged into the garage. There was a large explosion, and six people ended up dying as a result of this accident. And several were flown to burn units, even in the, in the lower 48, because they overwhelmed the medical resources there on the island. And so, there can be some significant bad outcomes from, from storage and use of these fireworks.
Yes. Because they are, they've got, you know, explosive material in them. So, not a good idea to store in your house. Never want anybody to throw or shoot a firework at somebody. You might have heard stories with kids shooting at each other with gas, or with garbage can lids. We don't ever want to see that. Making sure that people understand that fireworks are dangerous. They're full of chemicals. So, making sure, even if you're not currently using them, that they're out of reach of little hands, so that they don't run the risk of ingesting them. Same thing with pets. And then, also, I would just say, you know, be mindful of pets. I know Animal Services isn't here right now, but they'll tell you, they always get an influx of dogs running at large, because they get scared, and they're trying to seek shelter. So, making sure you have, like, IDs on your dog, that they can be easily identified, a phone number, maybe they can reach you at if the dog gets out. And then, I'd also say, you know, be mindful of the vets, because we have a lot of vets out there that have experienced, you know, situations where loud noises scare them. And so, it's just something to be mindful of. If you have a family member or a friend who's a vet, maybe just check in on them. So...
Yeah. To expand a little bit more on that, we've, we've gone to some training that talks about the PTSD/PTSI type of effects that loud noises can have on anybody that has that, not just isolated to veterans, but anybody that may suffer from the PTSD/PTSI. And then, animals. My, my dogs, I got two big giant dogs. One's 135 pounds, and another one's 126 pounds. But they hate fireworks. I mean, they come, they go running for cover. Well, one of them does, the male, goes running for cover and looking for a place to hide when, when those go off. And we do, we do experience calls for service for animals that escape their house or escape their yard and are running at large, and they're scared, and then they run out in the roadway and could be hit by a vehicle. So, those are, those are other, like, some unintended consequences that happen when, when a lot of the, the illegal fireworks are going off, because those are the ones that make the super loud bangs, shake your house. Or sometimes, if they go off low, the debris will hit your house. So, those are all, those are all issues to compound what Kim was talking about.
Yes. So, I think that was from what we have. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, or we're open, happy to answer questions too.
So, I do have a few more things. Last year, just so, just to give everybody some context, I believe it was, was it, was it a Thursday that we had the 4th on last year, or was it Wednesday?
It was Thursday.
So, more middle of the week. During that week, from July the 2nd to the 7th, we took 585 calls for service. And out of, out of those, 136 of those were fireworks related. So, we were very busy doing that, and that included four DUIs. So, one of the things that I'd also, the message that I'd like to get out, that, you know, we want people to have a good time. We understand people are, you know, it's on a weekend, people are going to drink at the, at the wellness complex, and they're at a party or something. Just be responsible with it. If you're going to drive, get an Uber, walk, call a taxi, call Lyft. There's a lot of different options out there, rather than getting behind the wheel of a motor vehicle, because if there's a DUI accident, there's going to be additional vehicles out driving around, just because of the mere fact that it is on a weekend. And there's, that's going to attract more people to Pocatello, to the wellness complex, and then, from there, going out and to other events in town. So, if you're doing that, please don't, please don't mix copious amounts of alcohol with fireworks. That's never a good combination. So, we would, we would like people to have a good, safe 4th of July, be patriotic. It's, you know, the 4th of July is a great event. We live in the greatest country in the world, and, and we like to celebrate that. But we want to do that in a safe manner for everybody, and have respect for everybody's property. I don't want my property to burn down just as much as anybody up here or down there wants your property to burn down, because somebody was irresponsible with an illegal firework. And we understand they sell them pretty close by. They sell them, you know, you can get them in another state that's close by. And, but it is illegal to possess them as per city code, and that's, that's why we seize them. If we come across them, we will, we will seize your fireworks. If you have illegal fireworks, we will seize them, and they will be destroyed. And chances are, you're going to get a ticket. So, let's see, any other points I wanted to hit there? We've also worked with our legal department and our fire department, and as well as, we just, we just met with several of the other agencies, Banta County Sheriff's, Idaho State Police, and Chubbe Police. And for the most part, we are, we are mission aligned in, in the enforcement and how we're going to approach this, because if a fire happens in Pocatello, we may need more resources. And so, then, we call on other agencies, or if something happens up at the wellness complex, and they're going to call for our help. So, and we all work well together. So, this is something that Chief O'Hern and I have worked on constantly over the last couple of years, to make sure that we start to curb some type of behaviors, because it's pretty much, it's gotten out of control with, with illegal aerial fireworks. Kim? Chief?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Any questions?
Counsel?
I just have one comment, not really a question, but we do have, what's it called? The greatest show in Idaho?
Yes.
Which has incredible fireworks, and they're bigger and better than anything we could set off at our homes. So, my advice would just be, you know, take your family to that and see a great show that we know is safe and controlled, and...
And free.
And free. So, it's a great way to celebrate the 4th, and it is just a safe way to do it, and it doesn't risk your property, or your safety, or anyone else's. So...
Well, and we've even seen it at some of the professional shows, where they're regulated by professionals, where there've been accidents, where one doesn't go off as high as expected, and people get hurt. And here's the other thing. We live in southeast Idaho, where the wind never blows, right? I mean, it, it could be like completely calm, and like, the fire that just happened, I was listening to the radio traffic, and it was moving up the hill. And then, it quickly shifted as the wind shifted, and it started moving down the hill towards the houses. So, all it takes is a wind gust to happen when one of these aerials go off, and it carry it over, a house is under construction, a business is under construction, some dry brush, and it, it just ignites it. So, that's the other, the variable that's out there, is the wind, that we can never predict. Never predict the weather. So, that's always a variable that I'm worried about.
You know, I think we have to remember, Bancroft had a residential fire just a few days ago, and it destroyed several homes and businesses, and it was almost instantaneous. I mean, it moved really fast. And it, we remember Charlotte, what, $560 million worth of damage that, that day?
66 structures?
Yeah. This is nothing to be considered lightly.
Yeah. And I think sometimes people do, and they like, when we contact them, they're like, oh, what are you doing? This isn't a big deal. We're just lighting off fireworks. And it's like, well, when you look at what's in that fire, those fireworks, you've got some, some explosives in there. I mean, those, those are explosives, make no doubt about it, that, you know, we don't want to keep in, in our building. And it's no different than, I mean, when, when you look at what happened in the Boston bombing, they made those pressure cooker bombs out of fireworks. They, they took the guts of the fireworks, and they put them in the pressure cookers, is how they built those. So, when, when you look at it, and people want to take things, and, oh, it's just, you're, you're being the, the no fun police. Well, I look on the, and they're on the side of caution and safety, and our, our, you know, mission, vision, values line up with the fire departments on, on the safety end of things. And I guess if people want to look at it from that perspective, they can look at it from that perspective. But I know members of my staff, including myself, will be out on the 4th of July with Chief O'Hern.
This is a weird space for me. But I'm going to crowd in here. Thank you very much for, for doing this. I do have one question, Chief. You, you mentioned that people say they don't want to be involved sometimes, but you said, well, you are involved. If somebody asks, who called it in? We're not volunteering names or any of that, are we? We're, we're keeping that as confidential as, as we can. Is that correct? I don't, what I don't want is somebody to not call because they're afraid their neighbor's going to find out who it was.
Yeah. A lot of times, you know, if we can see it happening in front of us, we don't need that person's information. If it's happening right in front of us, and they're like, I would rather not be involved and leave my, my, my information, and we have, we can see it going on, then we can handle it that way. Obviously, if somebody does leave their name and number, and the, and the information does get requested through the Freedom of Information Act, we're probably going to release who, who's involved. We do redact information if we believe that there's a threat or some, some other reason, we would consult with legal on redacting certain information. But, but there's ways that we can keep people's information confidential, if, especially if we see it happening right in front of us. I mean, that's, that's the best.
I think it's going to be important for us to make sure we keep it as confidential as we possibly can.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
We do have, we have a few people that have signed up, and I want to make sure they have an opportunity to, to ask a few questions, or to make a statement and stuff. So, if you're okay, we're going to go ahead and start with Jeb Harrison.
Hey, guys. First of all, thank you for allowing me to talk to you guys and speak to you guys. I've already learned a lot of good information, but I think I can provide a different perspective than what you guys have been referring to. My name is Jeb Harrison. I'm a high school teacher. I taught at Pocahontas for years. Rick volunteered in my class for a while, lived on the west bench for quite a while. I have three fireworks stands in Pocatello. And these fireworks stands are important to, to our family. But I would like to express a little bit of frustration with the current system. Okay? We do things the right way. We do things the legal way. We provide safe and sane products. We have to have insurance, permits, inspections by the fire marshal. We collect sales tax, and we pay, and we pay income tax. We're also heavily invested. So, it's very frustrating for me when I see people go up the road 15 minutes, and they come back with aerials, roman candles, bottle rockets, firecrackers, all, all of which are illegal. I provide a safe, legal product at a very fair price. If I could sell those types of products, I'd make 10 times the money. Okay? So, it's frustrating to watch the Fort Hall stands and the other fireworks stands. Just out, you mentioned Bingham County, there's three ginormous illegal stands on the west side of the river right now that sell all aerials. So, it becomes frustrating for us to, you know, have to follow the rules, pay all the fees, pay sales tax, and that income funds the fire department, police station, and all that. I get that. But while those other stands don't, they don't pay tax. They don't pay sales tax. They don't have to have permits. They don't have to have inspections. And I thought perhaps you guys brought up, one of the things that was one of the more frustrating parts is, I sold fireworks during the Charlotte fire. It was totally scary. It came close to my house. But they shut down the safe and sane fireworks stands. All that did was drove people out to Fort Hall. They had a better year than most. Okay? I know there was a, they mentioned there was a fire already. It wasn't from my stand, because we haven't been open. So, if they have been shooting fireworks, those are the illegal fireworks.
Jeb, we only have two minutes, and your two minutes is up.
Would you guys allow me to have some more time?
Right now, we want to. Let's get to some others, and then we'll get you back up here in a minute.
Thank you.
If we have time. All right. Sorry about that. I do need to remind everybody, you have two minutes to do this. Let's go to Heather Diselco.
Heather Diselco, Pocatello. I'm here to bring awareness to the council and the public that Pocatello utility users were charged over $11.5 million in unconstitutional disguised tax fees over the last 10 and a half years. The Bradbury case challenged Lewiston's street impact utility fees, which are nearly identical to Pocatello's right-of-way maintenance utility fees. The judge wrote, quote, "The street impact fees that he issued here are akin to the maintenance fees addressed in Brewster and the pilot fees from Hillview." Both lawsuits, Pocatello lost. Lewiston lost in 2021. Moscow removed their unlawful utility fees from their budget mid-year in 2023. You're in a tough spot. When these right-of-way fees were implemented in 2014, none of you council members were seated. You've inherited them. But you didn't recognize the issues, and you missed some warning flags. With Hillview, the city got off easy, repaying legal fees and two years' worth of unconstitutional utility fees. This time, that amount could double. You must make a decision quickly. If I ran your shoes, I'd seek an opinion from the AG's office or another non-biased party. You can right this wrong and cease collection of these disguised tax fees, or you can keep collecting them and gamble, take a huge risk that maybe our local citizens and employees won't be dragged into another costly and lengthy lawsuit, and be forced to pay the insurance premiums to cover your legal fees, plus a large payout to reimburse citizens for this unconstitutional taking. Please weigh these costs carefully. $1.7 million in revenue versus a potential $5-plus million lawsuit and settlement. But know this, your decision will be your legacy. Your names will be tied to that decision. When you each took an office, you swore to support the Constitution of the United States. And apparently, these fees are violation of Idaho law and a taking under the Constitution. In my view, there's only one ethical, lawful path forward.
Thank you.
Please take this into consideration, and let us know your decision.
Thank you. Stephen Adams.
Stephen Adams, Pocatello, Idaho. In reviewing the financial management policies as outlined on September the 21st of 2017, we need to be sure that we follow... of 2017, we need to be sure that we follow the financial management policies, the purposes and objectives that are written in that 2017 policy. Failure to do so by adhering to those policies that we have adopted as a city can affect our future credit ratings and how we are able to obtain future grants and also the interest ratings that we have on future government loans that we have. It says, "To protect the city's credit union and provide for adequate resources to meet the provisions of the city's debts and obligations." Again, this, following these policies word for word, line upon line, helps determine our credit rating worthiness and also the interest rates that we're charged as a city on bonds and the availability of grant money. And I'd like to leave whatever few seconds I have to the gentleman over here. I reserve time for this gentleman.
Thank you, that was awfully nice of you. You get thirty, twenty seconds. I hope you can cover it all in twenty. But before that, we've got Kristy Lewis.
I can speak?
You can speak.
Kristy Lewis, Pocatello. My concern is fireworks. And if I call on my idiot neighbor, are you going to come to my house? Because he's a lunatic. I live on Mona Vista. We have the huge dry gully right behind us. No defend, no defensible space on any of the homes. No way for the fire department to reach that gully. That gully goes straight up Pocatello Creek Road. Underneath the interstate, also includes Mona Vista Hills. How fast can you evacuate that? And so I hope that we're in the forbidden area, but our neighbors, we literally sit on our patio and it showers into our backyard. On our patio, they shoot them across the street. It's, it's unbelievable. Areas like this in the bark mulch in front of our home, burning still at 5:00 AM. And, you know, my dogs are terrified. I have to sedate them. I just, it's, it's crazy. I can't take it. So if I call you and you eventually come, is a debris field enough to, to go to their home?
So if we start to look at things and we can establish probable cause, but the, the thing we're going to have to establish the probable cause is who was doing it?
Because the other thing is they never clean up. So it's obvious where they are.
Sure. And, but we're going to have, once again, we have to, if we're going to go for like a littering complaint or vandalism or anything like that, we, and we have a suspect, we have to establish probable cause.
Because we can see the fireworks from our backyard. So we sit there and watch them.
Sure.
But we have to live with these idiots. It frightens the hell out of me. I talked to you. I talked to the guy before you last year. I don't know if anybody has ever looked at that area.
We, we changed it to no fireworks.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, that's all I got.
What, what, what's your address?
We live on Mona Vista, thirteen thirty-four. Maybe if they could just run a police car up every few hours. These people start at noon and they drink. So by midnight, there is no way that I'm going to approach them.
Sure, we don't want you to.
And, you know, we have to live there.
Yeah.
Plus, we're one of the arteries from the fairgrounds where we stopped a car for forty-five seconds one night to let motorcycles in our driveway and guns were drawn. I hate the Fourth of July. I used to, I used to like it. I, I don't want to live in terror in my home.
Understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Kristy, one of my favorite people right there. She says it how it is. So, so we have made the Mona Vista area right there a no fireworks.
That gully that's behind her home is a no fireworks.
So as you're going up East Alameda Road, there's a road that goes into that gully. That gully is no fireworks.
And is our street no fireworks?
Mona Vista itself is, still allows fireworks.
They're dashing around the gully.
What's it?
They're shooting them from the halls.
Yes.
I'll look at the map with you after tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's some other things too, that if, if you, if you do make a report and there are criminal charges that are filed against somebody and then you're harassed because of that, there's Idaho code that, that we can use if they do that. It's called witness intimidation, so. And we have charged people with that in the past, so.
We drink a lot, these guys drink a lot.
But they drink in their front yard.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, and we're going to about, I'm going to do something I never do, breaks every rule that I've ever made for myself, but I'm going to give Jeb an opportunity to come back up and say a few other words.
Thank you.
And we'll give him a little bit more than the twenty seconds reserved for him.
Thank you. All right, guys, thank you once again. First of all, remember, Safe and Sane fireworks, they don't cause problems, the illegal ones do. They carry up in the air and the ember spread and you have no, no control of those fireworks. That typically doesn't happen with the Safe and Sane fireworks. I would like to see the city of Pocatello seriously increase the enforcement of this law. I get it, we're understaffed, there's, there's not enough of us. The tickets and confiscation that I just learned about, I appreciate what you guys have done and all that you have said. That's a good start. Those are significant improvements. You guys caught, you got ten thousand dollars worth of fireworks. The average sale at Fort Hall is eight hundred dollars, so that was twelve customers. Okay? And I don't think a hundred dollar fine scares drunk people. Okay? So respectfully, can you guys help those of us who are doing things legally? Getting all the paperwork, the permits, the taxes, doing all that stuff? Can you help us by cracking down more on those who are not doing things legally? Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor.
So I, I'd like to address that, right? That we're doing our best. And like last year, we issued fifty-two citations. So this year, we're, we're, we got extra patrols, we've got extra manpower out there and, and we're going to be working hard to, to work on that. So thank you, thank you for being a, a business owner in town and responsible taxpayer. Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you for doing it right.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you shouldn't be penalized for doing it right.
Thank you.
So I really appreciate that because I know you could make a lot more money, but we need people like you to do it the right way.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So staff, how'd that feel?
Is the gavel up here?
Yeah.
We'll get the gavel right here.
I'll give it to him.
Don't let Kim have it.
I would, I would like to, instead of have everybody move around and stuff, I'll just do it from here. I would like to thank everybody that came tonight. Thank you very much for being here. This is extremely important. Staff, thank you for being here. Council, thank you for being here. This, I used to love fireworks. I used to love the Fourth of July. I hate it because it scares dogs and it destroys property. And we've seen where just locally, I know Chief O'Hern, you talked a little bit about some of the fires that have happened in California and in Maui and stuff. And a lot of us can say, oh, well, that was out there, that wasn't here. We're, this is Pocatello. But we also talked about a couple of fires right here in Pocatello. I remember the bit of root fire like it was yesterday. We burned two and a half houses down, destroyed lives and it was, it was a mess. Last year, we dodged a bullet with the El Rancho Fire. Luckily, we had people right there on top of it. And if we have a fire or a breeze that we usually do, yeah, we could lose life and property and it is a very, very dangerous thing. And so thank you for being here and I, I really do hope that the public really truly is, understands and knows and realizes the dangers that, that we are there. I, I understand Jeb's frustration. Part of their livelihood is fire, the fire stand and they're doing it right, the Safe and Sane. And when we have people that drive fifteen minutes north and, and buy the illegal fireworks and then come here, it costs city of Pocatello taxpayers hundreds and thousands of dollars every year for patrol and to try to get people to prevent and stop using those. And so thank you very much. Thank you to the public that, that came. Thank you for, for your interest. This, this is a hot topic and it's something that is, is very serious in, in my mind, so. She didn't start the two minutes and so I didn't go, I haven't gone over yet. I appreciate it. And with that, we are adjourned.
We missed the gavel.